Thank you. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, the public and members on Zoom. And for the record, Councilperson Scarpa is on Zoom.
In the show.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, the public and members on Zoom. And for the record, Councilperson Scarpa is on Zoom. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No name matters will start after ten thirty P M. I ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm going to give this to the flag the United States on it. And to all the righteous hands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice.
Thank you, please proceed then. The next planning board special meeting will be held on. Sorry, the next planning board special meeting will be held on July thirtieth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M. In council chambers, the July twenty third, twenty twenty five proposed special meeting is canceled. The next planning board regular meeting will be held August sixth, twenty twenty five at seven thirty P M. One more thing, this evening we were going to hear. P B twenty nine, twenty nine dash twenty five ordinance amending chapter twenty five, section one, 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 zero, regarding outdoor cafes, outdoor cafe revised by Mr. Fonzino, five, twenty two, twenty five. Memo from the Chamber of Commerce and West Orange Township. We will not be hearing that this evening. The council has notified us that there was a new ordinance proposed that they will be hearing on first reading next week. So anybody on Zoom or anybody who's here in the public to comment on it, please understand, we will not hear that tonight. Count, we are pulling it and we will wait to hear from the council when they send something down to us again. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Here.
Cacardoza. Miss Caffrey. Mister Klein.
Here.
Mister Wokes. As a woman's carpa.
Present.
Mayor McCartney, present. Mister, where you know.
Present.
Chairman Baglo.
Present, thank you. A quorum is present. Minutes and resolutions, P B twenty four dash fourteen dash one seventy two, seventy four, Main Street. The draft resolution, do I have a motion to approve?
Some move, Mister Chairman.
His chairman second provides the motion, I second the motion on the motion with the conditions.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
That's a woman's carpa.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mister, where you know.
Yes.
Chairman Baglo.
Yes, motion carries. P B twenty five dash oh five, West Orange Board of Education, Mount Pleasant Elementary School, draft resolution. This was a courtesy review. With conditions on the motion, I make a motion, we approve and send a letter to the school board with condition, recommended conditions.
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mister, where you know.
Yes.
Chairman Baglo.
Yes, thank you, motion carries. Four, two, two, twenty, twenty twenty five, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. I make a motion, we approve, do I have a second?
Second, Mister Chairman.
Anybody have any corrections or deletions or additions, seeing none on the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
That's a woman's carpa.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mister, Mister Klein.
Yes.
Mister, where you know.
Yes.
Chairman Baglo.
Yes, motion carries, minutes are adopted. Four, nine, twenty twenty five, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes, I make a motion, we adopt, second, who seconds the motion?
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds the motion, are there any additions, deletions or corrections? Seeing none on the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
Mister Klein.
Yes.
That's a woman's carpa.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mister, where you know.
Yes.
Chairman Baglo.
Yes, minutes are adopted. Four, sixteen, twenty twenty five, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes, I make a motion, we adopt, do I have a second?
Second, Mister Chairman.
His chairman, Corino, seconds, are there any additions, deletions or corrections? Seeing none on the motion, Yamalat.
Mister Alpert.
Yes.
That's a woman's carpa.
Yes.
Mayor McCartney.
Yes.
Mister Klein.
Yes.
Mister, where you know.
Yes.
Chairman Baglo.
Yes, minutes are adopted, Miss McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Here we have Mister Hazel, we have Mister McNeil, please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Thank you.
We have application before us this evening, P B twenty four dash oh one, West Essex Highlands Incorporated, block one seventy nine, lot thirty two, zone I H one. One in a row, the applicant is proposing to develop a four hundred and ninety six unit inclusionary multifamily residential development on vacant hundred and twenty acre property in the northwest corner of the township. For the objective, Mister Ephron.
Good evening, Mister Chairman, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We are ready to proceed, I think. Mister Gall, our geotechnical engineer just arrived, he was in thunderstorms, he needs a couple of minutes to set up. But we're ready to proceed with his testimony.
Okay, Mister Ephron, we'll give him a couple of minutes, we'll do case management now.
Yeah.
So July thirtieth, we have a meeting. Are there any other? Experts or people you wish to have speak at that meeting?
Yes, we have our planner, Dennis Hudasko. Our traffic expert, Outlet Warnia. Oh, sorry, Michelle Byers will testify as well, she is formerly on the State Planning Commission. And she is also the former recently retired executive director of the New Jersey Conservation Fund, among other things. We have two witnesses who have been in contact with us, but they're independent, but they'll be here. That's Greg Messera. And. Mike Petrie, Mike Petrie is the engineer, I believe, of Verona. And. Greg is one of the township attorneys who has background on certain agreements and restrictions that he will testify to. In addition. We expect to have Chris Boeckel, B O E K E L, the Essex Fells Fire Department Commander, who was on scene at the time of the event that Ed Davis spoke to at the last meeting. In addition, we have what I understand will be a witness as an expert, the Totower Fire Chief, Richard Sharkell. And the word Sharkell I am pronouncing purely phonetically, I do not have the precise pronunciation of his name. And we additionally have John Hassie, who is the chief of the Geospatial. Department at Rowan University, who has actually been a consultant for the state, many state departments, Fairshire Housing, State Department of Agriculture, on the geo technic, geospatial aspects of properties that are identified for different state purposes. Development purposes, agricultural preservation, parkland, and actually for affordable housing. And so he will testify as to their data collection with respect to this site, however, he is out of the country and has been all month. He does not return until August third. So I know the chair wanted our witnesses to finish on that date, which I don't think is inherently unreasonable, but he's not here. And so he won't be here until August, until, let's assume he gets seen August third, he's not here until after August third. So that, that as far as I know comprises our witnesses. If anyone has any illness or any need, we might have to put a different figure in in their place. But that's essentially the list of who we have, that would be a full night, I'm sure, on July thirtieth. Obviously, I don't know the extent to which there'd be board or community questions. Mister Plucker is always very efficient in his cross examination, but I don't know the extent to which the community will have questions relating to those witnesses.
Mister Ephron, would you transmit a list to our, uh, Miss McGovern and Mister Plucker of everything you just said? It'll all be in a nice concise email.
I think I'd have to do it Friday morning, if you don't mind, I'll be in a medical appointment tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Are any of these people for tonight?
No, this is the thirtieth.
No.
Uh, can any of them be available tonight, or any of them here?
No, they're not, that's, that's the point.
Who do you have tonight?
Ed Davis is here, who does have the video presentation that he didn't have at the last meeting, so he is here. John Haydo will be arriving and he has a video presentation relating to flooding and related issues, because he's one of the individuals who lives on the border of this property. And we have Jeff Gall, Jeffrey Gall, who's of Princeton Hydro. He's getting ready, he is the geotechnical engineer.
Chairman.
I'm sorry, one additional individual, Maria, Maria De Palmer, who also had a video that she did not have with her at the last meeting, she is here. Can I have one moment, I want to make sure there's no other names.
Are we going to see these videos, the technology?
There was an individual who was ready to testify two meetings back, but there was some confusion as to which agency she was from. The chair felt her testimony was moot because there was confusion of her agency. She's from Anne Marchionne, she's from the Essex County Environmental Commission, she may be here tonight. That concludes my information.
How aren't these videos going to be transmitted, do we already, you have them already? Okay, all right.
I know we have a date on June, July thirtieth. I know we also have to have at least a night, potentially more for community comment, that's obviously in the chair's discretion. And we have to have a night for closings and then I don't know how much deliberation the board needs, then board might need a whole night, I don't know. So it would be helpful, especially in terms of community comment. So the community knows when to come for that, because many people. Mister Bagoff, you were the victim, you're the target of those comments. Many people said, I want to comment now and I don't want to just ask questions, so many people want to do that, I know. And it would be helpful if we could set a date somewhat in advance, so the community knows when that night would be for them. I don't know how far ahead you can schedule, but my client asked me if I could raise that potential possibility.
I don't know. I, I think we should get the list of all the people that you want to speak and what they're talking about. And then we'll, we'll better be able to organize when that's going to happen.
You, you can't have public comment until the testimony is done, because they have to, people have to know everything that's been testified to.
I, I don't disagree, I'm just conveying the, the request.
And if we get all of those people that you said for July thirtieth done on July thirtieth.
Yeah, it could be done August second.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
I, I don't know if we can get them all in either, it would be, it would require extreme efficiency on behalf of a hundred people in this room. So I don't know if that'll really happen.
Well, that was my, that was a, Chairman, that was my question, has it been?
Mayor McCartney.
Yes, has it been determined that we have a quorum on Jul, on July thirtieth?
I think we do.
Do we have a quorum?
For July thirty, right?
Yeah, we're checking.
There's so many people not here.
We have some missing people.
It seemed to me, Chairman, at our last discussion, that there were quite a number of people that were not available.
So for example, Lisa Alpert, are you available? Yes.
I, I don't think I said it was.
Mister, where you know.
Are you going on the thirtieth?
Yes. Mister Klein?
No.
Mayor McCartney? That's a woman's carpa.
Yes.
That's so far before.
And then, Mister Cardosa said he was available on the thirtieth.
He said yes, yes. Alright, so what do we have, four or five?
We have five so far.
Okay, so that's a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't miss it.
I know.
So I'm gonna have to wait. Mister Wokes and, and Miss Caffrey to confirm.
Okay, alright. So yes, it's looking. Where did he go?
Two nights, please. Those people use their five minutes, so.
If you're, if you're lucky. When you come back, who can like, oh yeah, they're all done.
Video, we might watch a movie.
No, but then you, you know that it was one boom, 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 boom.
Yeah.
Yeah. The transfer.
Oh yeah, that's gonna be, I'm gonna see it soon, you know, though.
Are you ready?
I'm sorry, did we, I, I was talking to my client, did we? On July thirty, okay.
Yes.
Thank you, what, the request I've been asked to ma, to make, and Mister Panula may want to make it himself, is that regardless of the content of that particular night, whether it's testimony, rebuttal, community comment, it's been made known to me that it would be helpful if we could get several dates in advance for all of those purposes, just so people who want to attend could plan, say, four to six weeks ahead or eight weeks ahead. I'm conveying that request, I don't take a position, but I'm conveying that request. I don't.
We, we, we can't go that hard, we can't.
I, I'm simply conveying the request.
We.
No, let's see the list, let's see the list first.
And can you give us a guess, like, how long they're gonna be? Somebody's got to. All of those people are here on the thirtieth with, with questions from the board and the public, that will be that whole night, at least.
Plus.
Plus, probably.
Yeah, so, okay.
Right, no, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting we identify the subject of the meetings, but if we're able to identify when meetings will be for the next.
We can't give you other meetings, because we have to send out feelers from the board members to see who's got a vacation planned in August, who's got holidays in September.
I'm conveying the request from my client, he's agreed to speak.
Yeah, the room gets reserved by other people.
I see that. You say my people are scheduled, there are sixty, most people weren't trying to schedule, I'm the one arranging the schedules. And a meeting in advance, two meetings in advance, this was a little easier tonight, now next week is off, the thirtieth is on, there's no visibility, best the next meeting. So we'll manage out of the country till the thirtieth, we're back. If we can't get everybody in and finished on the thirtieth. Well, I can anticipate that's possible, but if that happens, great, if there's another meeting or two dates set for which maybe there's public comment, opposing arguments, deliberations, however, for how you want to build, doesn't really matter, as long as there's part dates that if they need to change, because we got everything that we could on the thirtieth, which didn't finish. People can be rearranged ahead of time with visibility, they can't do that without, wouldn't even find the event, and now, people out of the country, but someone's, don't look practically how to do it, so. Just trying to find a way to have visibility before all the time, we're not, I'm not going to put you around, some people are coming, planning out a half way, traffic hours now and a half away, two different directions. In August, some people are going to be away, people are away now, it's a bit hard to swap this all in, I'm just trying to practice a lot of the big impossible. More than one meeting at a time, visibility helps that be possible, that's all, that's all it is.
Please send the list. Please send the list.
I can pull some lists, does that mean a meeting can get you all, no, or shall I forget it?
Send the list and go from there. Send the list and we'll go from there, I will speak to the attorney, Mister Plucker, and we'll go from there.
We make every effort to do as things as far in advance as we can, it also helps our board members, and the board members are all volunteers, they're not getting paid to be here, so. They have given their time. They have given their time and then some, so we're working with them and working and, and, and you can, Mister Appern will tell you and Mister Plucker. We work well in advance of when something's getting scheduled, we will do that.
If you, if you send the list, we will get back to Mister Ephron and ask him, can he give us time, so we'll better understand what we need. So that will help us give you a better answer.
I, I think I should.
When is that? We, we are sensitive to the issues and we will work with everybody. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I do have one request, I look forward to getting a list from all the names and professionals identified. I'm most interested in the planner and the traffic engineer, and I would ask if they could bring them on the thirtieth, can that represent?
That was the plan, that is the plan.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, maybe I have to amend what I just said.
Yeah.
So put them in order, too.
We're gonna take a two minute break.
Um, don't lie.
Yes.
I was gonna, don't say anything about Frank Case.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't.
They've been here for ten.
They don't know what.
Oh.
I haven't seen what happened. Yeah, okay, that's gonna be.
Mister Ephron? Mister Ephron? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're. Ladies and gentlemen. Mister Ephron, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to proceed with Mister Gall, Mister Gall, excuse me, and. Alright, I will try to shout more, I'm sorry. Tell me if this is better, we are prepared to proceed with Mister Gall, is that better?
We spell, you spell a name.
G O L L. Jeffrey is spelled, I want to be careful about this, G E O F F R E Y.
E, E Y.
Yes. So objectives are calling Jeffrey Gall, and let me allow Mister Gall to just state his own credentials, then I'll move him as an expert. And I think for convenience, he's gonna stand here, he's gonna present his own report, if I have any supplemental questions, I will present those to him.
Great, thank you, Mister Gall. And our council is going to swear you in momentarily.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and spell it.
Sure, I stated before, my name is Jeffrey, it's G E O F F R E Y, middle initial M, last name Gall, G O L L.
You have the floor, sir.
Sure, just as for my background, I've also, I have copies of a report, a, a, a short letter report I prepared, just to back up my testimony. And then also, I have a copy of my C V that's here as well for distribution, I think I brought enough, that should be enough for the, for the planning board, just to have a copy of. But for the, for my background, I'm the, I'm currently the president of Princeton Hydro. We're a, an environmental and geotechnical engineering firm. I've been, I was actually one of the founding partners back in nineteen ninety eight. We've been in business for twenty seven years, we have sixty people. I graduated from Rutgers University with a bachelor of science in civil engineering in nineteen ninety. I also have a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin Madison, I'm an engineer, an engineer, a master of engineering management. I've, beginning of my career as far as geotechnical work, I started at Good Kind of Day, back in the day, back in nineteen ninety, which is now Dewberry, I worked there for several years, I then worked for Melick Tully, which is now, I think, just was recently purchased by G Z A. And they were a geotechnical engineering firm, and I worked there for several years as well. And then I ended up at a company called Coastal Environmental Services, this is in about nineteen ninety five, ninety six, where I met my future business partners, who, three years later, in nineteen ninety eight, we started Princeton Hydro. And we've grown to about, like I said, sixty people. In that time, we're based right now in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing, as well as ten other jurisdictions, which includes also the District of Columbia. I've worked on a number of different types of engineering projects and overseen, been in responsible charge, including slope stability analysis. And in Jersey City, for example, right now, I'm the engineer of record for Liberty State Park through the Army Corps of Engineers, one of our clients, and we're working on the geotechnical work there, as well as the site development. And I've been working on the slope stability there, also reviewed projects in Jersey City, Atlantic Highlands, which is another area, a little slightly different geologically, but steep slopes and, and they actually have their own steep slope ordinance down there with cemented sands, and I've worked on those projects as well. And so I don't know if that's enough information that you need.
Yes, thank you, do any members of the board have any questions? So we accept you as a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, go right ahead, sir.
Let me just note, I understand you're a lifetime chief in the ward from the Highlands Coalition, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
That was for, could you describe without?
Uh, just providing, for, really on the environmental engineering side of the business, providing support, we do a lot of ecosystem restoration work as well. And engineering guidance for nonprofits and G Os in the state of New Jersey.
We have the C V, which I would plus marking as an.
Okay.
We also have the report marked, please, and distributed.
Has a report been provided to the Planning Board Secretary before this?
No, I, I brought, I brought twenty copies of the report and the C V.
Provide it to the secretary, please.
Sixteen for the C V. And then oh seventeen will be the report, what's the date on the report, please?
It's July sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
I'll hear the talkings, the gentleman, yeah.
We'll provide it to the.
Yeah, they, they're here.
Yes, and we'll provide it to the applicant. And it'll be posted on the website tomorrow for the public.
Okay. Okay, can can everybody hear me now? Thank you, I usually have a pretty big mouth, so I'll I'll do my best.
Just about, I think it would be that, and still here.
Okay. Okay, I can do that. Testing, can everybody hear me? Can people hear me? All right, I will talk up, is this loud enough? Thank you. Um, okay, I'll get started.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so I I was tasked, I was uh contracted by We Care. Uh, to review the uh geotechnical slope stability analysis. Um, that was recently completed um as a supplemental to the January uh twenty twenty-five uh geotechnical investigation. Um, just as a little background, in terms of what I understand. Um, I've reviewed the application materials, uh, the Langen uh geotechnical engineering uh report that was uh recently submitted. I also was intent, in attendance by way of Zoom at the last, on the June thirtieth. Um, landing board meeting and listened to the uh testimony uh of the geotechnical engineer from Langen Engineering. Um, as well, so I understand uh some of the background and that actually, some of the testimony there is the basis of my uh, my report. So, just as a um. When I was listening to the testimony on June thirtieth. Um, there wasn't a lot of explanation about exactly what occurred, um, or and was tested for. Um, but there are four, basically four cross-sections that were analyzed for the steep slopes on the eastern side of the site. Uh, that is in the location of proposed building D. Um, which is on the uh top of the ridge um of this project site. Um, the uh. Sure, that here. So, what I'm gonna talk to you about tonight is the information provided, the borings, the data. The in, the data that was obtained was uh, was relatively credible. However, the analysis, as I will discuss. In my professional opinion, was flawed in terms of of how they use that data uh to analyze the site. Uh, one of the things I wanted to point out, um, is that uh, that the overall. What ended up happening is all these borings that were performed. Um, they use the best data, that relatively best data on the project site that they found, as opposed to looking at all the data and using. Uh, some of the areas of less competent material. The the investigation comprised of a number of borings, actually a total of eight borings. Um, on each one, uh two on each cross-section that was uh uh. Uh, provided in the report, uh, there were also a number of test pits that were excavated down, um, in some cases to refusal. Um, to uh characterize the subsurface of the site. Uh, just to understand what we're talking about is when you're doing a boring, especially to try to determine the characteristics of bedrock on a site. Is you actually do what's called a, you first go through the top soils that are there, using what's called a split spoon sampler, and that's hammered down into the ground with a standard using A S T M standards. Uh, to basically drive a spoon to collect soil samples. Once you get down to the point of bedrock. You then switch over to what's called a core, a rock core. And the core is is basically has a diamond uh cutting edge to it, an industrial diamond cutting edge to it. And they cores in five-foot segments through bedrock to collect the samples, so that they can then open up the samples onsite. And look at the, and characterize the rock. One of the big things we're gonna talk about is uh regard to the um adequacy of this slope is what's called a rock quality designation. Rock quality does, and I explain it in the report that I have, rock quality designation is a method to determine the competency of rock. Um, what you do is you, once you retrieve a sample. Um, you look at all the samples that are greater than um uh. A hundred millimeters, and and then you basically um. Count those up and add them up and divide that by the total length of the core. So, for example, if the ones you can measure that are greater than that. Uh, that width or thickness, so to speak, that length of core. Um, you then add the length of all those up, so if you were only finding fifty percent of the. Of the uh core has the length of material. Um, that can be counted. You basically have what's called a fifty percent R Q D. Now, a hundred percent R Q D, for example, was it, we got a piece of solid rock. Um, that was uh, basically, there was a hundred percent recovery, meaning when they did the core, they were able to, of the five feet, they were able to take the five feet out. And there was almost no breaks in the rock, so it was basically a solid piece of uh. Of of rock. Um, as you get lower and lower, the quality goes down, meaning it's the rock is more fractured, more weathered. And so, for example, one of the borings that they had found, they actually got what's called a zero percent rock quality designation. Zero percent means they couldn't find a uh enough of a length of material, a poor rock. Actually utilized in that calculation, meaning that was a highly fractured. Um, uh. Piece of rock, now that R Q D is very important, because what it does is it goes into what's called the the geological uh. Strength index. And the G, or the G S I, and that is in input into the model. Um, the slope stability bottom. Okay. So, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but I wanted to kind of go through the the um. The order of the report that I prepared. One of the things that I looked at is obviously, you're trying to keep the building. Uh, when you're develop, when you're developing your a rock face or a rock slope or any kind of steep slope area, is trying to keep the building. As far away from that slope as possible, so that you're not imparting the loads or doing excavation, for example. Um, um, that would impact the stability of that slope. One of the things that I did find, um, is that um in the settlement of litigation agreement. Um, signed by Mark Hoffman, um, on April twenty-third, twenty twenty. Um. It states that the application uh before the planning board must be developed consistent with the West Essex Highland Concept. Sixteen for West Essex, West Essex Highlands, and part of that, there's a conceptual layout of the buildings on the site. Which relatively, fits relatively uh the locations of the. Proposed buildings um as they are proposed today. However, one thing I noticed about building D. Uh, when you compare the concept to the current plan, they moved the building on the. Nor, the uh, so, the southern side of this, of the building, southern side most building, well, now it has a jog, it's supposed to be straight, it used to have one. A jog in the building, and now it has two. But they also moved that side of the building fifty feet closer. To the edge of the top of slope. On the, on the um. On the northern side. They ended up moving it about thirty-plus feet closer to the top of the slope. Um, on the side, what I think happened, when you review the plans, they had, in the concept, they had a parking lot to the south. Uh, a sole parking left to the south of the building, and now uh the plans show. Parking along the entire length of the building and also uh entrances to a parking garage, which required them to move the building. Uh, to the east in order to um. Uh. Get between the wetland. Uh, transition area and and the building structure itself. And so, that's a pretty significant difference, it's actually putting the building right, if you look at the plans or been out at the site, there's like a knob on the top of the property. Um, and based on its geography and um. Uh, they've basically, the building used to be behind that knob, and now it's on top of that knob.
May I interrupt for a moment, uh, Mr. Gall had asked me if we can get the report on the screen, it is now available, apparently. So if you need to refer to any of the pages on the screen, you can, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. So, um, so that's just one thing I wanted to understand, is it's actually, they're, that usually, instead of getting less conservative, they moved it toward the slope. Uh, the steep slope of this uh, of this project site. Um, so. One of the thing, the big things that I, that I found in the report is that these, these, this slope stability, the parameters that were used, do not, do not match the actual conditions. Um. They actually used a bar Q D of sixty-seven percent. Um, uh, throughout the document, uh, throughout the uh analysis, they basically assumed that the bedrock on this site going down the slope was a solid mass. Of. Of uh, the the pre-disformation, uh, which the basalt um on this site. And it went all the way down the hill, and there was no change to that bedrock quality or anything. Um. But when you look at the table, if you go to page two of this document, you can go there, oh, one page, go there, right there. So, in. So, highlighted in red is L, is boring. Um, L B three. L B three uh is cross, is identified as cross-section B on the plans. Uh, if you review the, the uh, the Langen report, it's, they took it basically above the top of the slope. Um, and so they took these cores and they got these rock quality designations, if you see on the right, of sixty-seven and seventy-seven. Um, and they ended up choosing uh, uh, the sixty, it looks like they ended up choosing the sixty-seven in order to determine the overall. Quality of this material, which then translated to the the competency of the rock. But when you look down. If you go to uh, for example, um, cross-section C. Uh, N L B one. Uh, shows, which is at the basically down slope in the middle of the slope, they got a rock quality designation of zero. Meaning, they didn't get any material that was long enough to count toward that rock quality designation, which illustrates that this material is highly fractured. Um, and if you recall from looking at the plans on the. Um, the, the uh. The northeastern side of the property, where the northern part of that building is where the steepest slope is. Um, and that is adjacent to the, there's a property on Howell. Uh, Drive, right down downhill of that building, and it's, it's one of the steepest areas, and in my opinion, probably one of the worst areas. Um, uh, of the slopes. So they basically took that information and they applied it broadly. They took the sit, the higher competency material and applied it broadly to the analysis. So what that does is all, all of a sudden, it takes all that information they did, they might as well have just done one boring. On that top of slope and ignored all the rest of the, the information. So, um, and that's where I talk about in item one on page two. Um, so they basically also talked about that they did an unconfined compressive strength on, or performed on two rock core samples, the borings L B three. Um, and L B four. Or no, suit, and and from L B three. And the reason they did that is those were likely, frankly, the most competent pieces of rock, they could probably do the compressive tests on the other rocks, probably so fractured, they couldn't. Um, get a test. But one of the things they did find is when we, when they did their compressive tests, and this is gonna get technical, so I'll just kind of explain what that, what the results mean. It end up, the strength test of these materials did not reflect a basalt-type material, it reflected more of a, like a uh, a less strength, strong type of material, like a, like a sandstone. Um, or, or as they call it in our, um, if you go to. Um, then the chart on the second, on the third page. Um. When you look, they were, when you're looking at specimens for. Um, the, the strength of the material, if you have a basalt, it's up at about a hundred to two hundred and fifty megapascals. Um, it's a very dense, strong material. However, the strength test that they provided actually came in with between this five and twenty-five megapascals. Um, and uh, it describes it more of like a chalk rock salted potash, now, do I believe that the rock is that weak or that? You know, such as that type of material, no, but it does show that in that location, bedrock is significantly weathered from basalt's, or you know. Ultimate ability um to resist the compressive strengths that they were doing the tests, so it's not quite as strong. Now, they did in, they did include. Uh, the lower, the lower compressive test in their slope stability analysis. Um. So, one of the big things that it does affect is the factor is the, um, as I was talking about before, the geo, the geological strength index, which is another input parameter. Um, and when you do that, they ended up and use a higher strength material, the G S I is also a higher level of um. Uh, a higher strength within the slope stability program. Um, but what would happen is that they actually had used something more realistic, let's say, using an average of all the R Q Ds down slope. Uh, that were found, and just as a function, two of the borings, by the way. The, the rock was so weathered, they went down fifty feet in one and forty-five feet in another. And they didn't hit anything that could be cord. In other words, they were able to grind through it, but the material was so broken up and weathered, they were able to to grind all the way down, they couldn't do a split spoon sample because there was too much rocketed. But they also couldn't do a core sample because it was so highly fractured. Um, that it was um, uh, not collectible by a rock core heat device. What does this mean? What it means is that the slope stability analysis they provided. Is not showing an analysis based on what's actually out there. Um, another thing that they did is, and one of the things they did do, um, which I do agree with, was they used a disturbance factor in the slope stability analysis, another factor, disturbance factor. Uh, describes the, the potential impact of construction. Um, or disturbance on a slope, they did use one, which is the highest, however. What would have been the adequate thing to do was use that disturbance factor of one, because they are gonna blow up the top of this mountain in order to get down to twenty-five feet. They need to get to the bottom of this garage. Um, they also should have used the quality, the actual quality, or at least an average of the quality of the material that was at, at the lower end of the slope. Because that's really the lower end of slopes, the toe of slope is really what's supporting everything above. And they should have broken out the cross-section to be, to reflect that. When you average that out. Because several of, they couldn't even collect samples, we make the assumption that the R Q D is zero, and so you get an average R Q D in this, on these lowers areas of of rock cores. Of basically, uh, twenty-three or less, it was actually about twenty. Um, I, when I created the average, which would then drive down that G S I, which would then, in combination with the disturbance factor, significantly reduce. The factors, the uh, the factor of safety of resistance to failure on this site. Um, while Langen also stated that they used a uniform loading of a thousand P S F for the mo, for the model, for the building, basically across the whole building. Um, they, they considered it far enough away from the top of the slope to have a surcharge impact. Um, however, the proposed building sits right on top of the slope. Um, of this uh area. And so, um, there would be an impact of loading on the slope. Um. They also didn't discuss or or provide in the model, I mean, they talked about an excavation of twenty-five feet, but they didn't run a model that shows now there's a twenty-five foot. Uh, section that's been excavated out, and what does that do now? If you think about it, you've got a rock slope, you're gonna dig down twenty-five feet, you're gonna end up with a, uh, basically separating that rock slope from the upland. Or the top of slope or beyond from that bedrock. How is, how stable is the material when they do that? And they're gonna basically cut off um that connection to the upper, um, the, the areas above the top of that slope. The, the model also omitted the presence of the felt bill formation, um, if you're not familiar with that, the, the site at the location, the, the, the basalt. Makes up the watch on in this, in this location is called a pre-disformation. Um, and it's identified in their report, but just down at the toe, near the toe of the slope. The, the, the formation changes to what's called the felt bill. And the felt bill is basically um. Uh, more of a uh, like a silt stone or a, or a, a sandstone, silt stone, mudstone type of material, which has a much lower strength. Important thing, I'm reason I'm bringing this up, is did some of those R Q Ds of zero and twenty-three, maybe they actually reflected. More of that sedimentary formation that is not as strong as the igneous um, uh, basalt formation um of that rock, but it was not modeled, and they did not separate out. Whether it was basalt or or the felt bill, they basically. Uh. They modeled it all as one type of rock. They also didn't include a discontinuity that was created from the wastewater utility line, there's a, there's a utility line. That runs at the toe of the slo, downhill slope. Um, I went back to some aerials, historic aerials, and you could see the. Um I went back to some aerials, historic aerials, and you could see that the uh utility was installed either at nineteen ninety five or before that, you know, it's from eighty six, I think the photograph was eighty six. There was nothing there and in ninety five, you could see the remnants of a, where it was cleared to install the wastewater uh pipe. What that does is it, when they excavate that out, they're actually creating more of a weak point on the toe of the slope. Because now it's an area that is not, it's not native, it's not um um in situ, it was backfilled. Likely because it's not in a area that uh is supposed to support structures. That trench was probably just simply backfilled. I mean, they may have had to put all the the requirements for the bedding material and things like that. Um but when they started getting up to grade, it wasn't like they were required to uh support a road or a or a building or anything like that. So the backfilling was probably uh backfill in less than the op, the optimum potential compaction that it could receive if there was gonna be a structural support on it. What that does though is it creates a weak point all the way across the toe of the slope. That could be a a failure location where a uh a slope failure could actually initiate within the trench. They also talk in the report about decomposed rock being a maximum of seven feet. When you look at the the boring logs, um it is significantly more than that, especially those boring sets that went down fifty feet and could not collect a cord but were able to drill through with a drill bit. Doesn't mean there wasn't bedrock there, it just means it was so highly weathered um that they, like I said before, they couldn't collect a split spoon because it was, the material was too coarse to be collected in the split spoon. But it was so broken up, they couldn't collect any rock force to the severance. They also dismissed uh the risks associated with the landslide class B three, that is, that's localized in the area directly below the building and the slope. Um when you look at the mapping for the the hazard class, the hazardous uh classification, uh landslide class B, when you look on page five, um it's, it's at the, go down to page five, please.
This is the page that you need.
No, that's the, that's page one. Three, four, there you go, right there, yep, okay, it's a little hard to see. Um but when you look at this and you look at a class three um on this, it's basically under B on the second line, uh the second row down of, you you can kind of barely see it on the screen, but the top row um is A, the middle row is B, the uh bottom row is C, and then below that, if there's a a higher groundwater, they also have different classifications of the hazard. This site's been identified as a hazard class uh three, uh meaning it has a basically a moderate potential for landslide activity. Now, according to uh the Langen report, they went out, they they looked at the outcrops. They differentiated the slope stability from rock falls and said, since the rock was fractured and leaning into the slope, that there was less of an ability or for a failure to occur and therefore we should not consider this an issue. However, when you look at the boring logs and the deteriorated state of bedrock in this location, um I would believe that this hazard classification is definitely warranted and they're putting a building right on top of it. And they're gonna be, uh and the slope is gonna be right there. Um so that's a big concern of mine. So I really feel that the the stability analysis was inadequate to assess the conditions of the subjects loaded to propose building. Um the parameters used only reflect the most competent locations above the top of the slope in the investigation and not degraded bedrock. Um and these are the conditions that were found in the middle of the slopes. And by also leaving out the impact of the subsurface wastewater utility line and the less competent felt bill formation provides an unrealistic evaluation um of the site provides a false sense of security um that subject proposed building D uh to be constructed. One of the things I also wanted to point out is when I heard the testimony on June thirtieth, they were talking a lot about blasting and uh whose responsibility was it to control blasting? Now, I see there's two parts to when, when you're dealing with blasting. There's the part of public safety and safety of workers, so uh when you're blasting, making sure nobody gets hurt, that you know, materials don't fly, you know, there's not, you know, they're using the right, the the right kind of blasting blankets. Um and that they're doing controlled blasts. Um it does not, that is the state regulations that cover this, and that's what I believe was discussed at the last planning board meeting. However, in accordance with the I B C code, international building code, New Jersey has adopted. You're actually, it doesn't, you're required to actually review and approve all the engineering before you go out, which means I think at the planning board level, I think you need to be comfortable that this building is not gonna cause a destabilizing effect, not only for the residents of that proposed building, but also the residents downhill um in those neighborhoods uh that are potentially subject to uh if there a landslide were to occur. Um and so the 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 approval of this blasting and saying that the state regulations cover that does not absolve the applicant on the planning board from request, really looking into this and making sure you're comfortable with what is being proposed here. It has to be realistic, right? So that's where um you need to really look at that.
Yeah, and I'm gonna reject to that, the the applicant does not dispute that it must follow rules, regulations and work with this town, but that issue is not an issue for this planning board to consider for approval.
The witness very clearly, thank you.
Mister Ephraim speaking, let's let him speak, please.
The witness very clearly has spoke to the inadequacy, in his opinion, as a professional engineer in this field to the te, of the testing that relies on falsely competent rock figures as opposed to the actual unstable figures. Let me finish, please.
Let me, let's Mister Ephraim, Mister Plucker.
And therefore, it's quite clear from his testimony that by undervaluing the decomposed Right, well, my point is only this, it is relevant for him to raise in that context, the question of blasting and how it will impact the site.
Let me finish, Mister Plucker.
Mr. Goll, you could address that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mister Plucker.
He made certain conclusions, we may disagree them, we may bring the witness back to contest that.
That's fine.
My, my objection dealt solely with the regulation of blasting. And I will repeat, there are regulations, we will work with the town, the state, whoever we have to work with to comply with those regulations and do safely. That that's always been our position and it's our position here tonight. However, I believe the witness did not say he was a land expert into what is within and not within the purview of the planning board. And my objection rests solely to the comment made by the witness that the planning, this is something the planning board must consider in connection with an approval.
Fair enough, we will review all the information uh with our uh legal advisors and our experts. And I understand what your objection is, I understand your comment. Go right ahead, Mister Goll.
All right, let me, and let me clarify, um counsel is correct, I it is regard specifically the state rules regarding the safety of blasting and making sure nobody gets hurt. What I was stating was, that's se- separate and apart from reviewing and application for all the engineering requirements for the immediate and long term term stability um of such a, an operation. So if they're blasting, is it designed in a way and control, is there a control or a um uh a, an operational plan that's gonna be clearly overseen? I can tell you in, in my experience, um going from blaster to blaster, it depends on the the company on their approach. Uh for example, we uh as a bridge we did down in um uh uh down in uh Hunterdon County um in uh West Anwell. Uh there was a bridge crossing and we were supposed to blast, well, the contractor was supposed to blast to get down a confident rock so that they could then lay a uh a foundation on it. Well, the blaster thought he was doing our, our client favor by overblasting so that the excavator could then go in and dig deeper and it would just be easier to take it out, except what happened is they overblasted. Meaning they completely eliminated the structural strength of that material underneath and we had to go in and do a retrofit.
Do you believe that the blaster that he's gonna use, is that person that's gonna overblast?
No, what I'm saying is
Then we're not gonna, we're not gonna hear anymore about that, let's focus on this application right here.
I am.
Okay, tha- that's an opinion that is not pertinent here, that's somebody else's application, okay?
Well, he's explaining why, if I may, why
This is an opinion about another site. Let's focus on this site and the information relative to this. What could be done in the future by somebody else who is or is not doing something in relation to what they think is extra? It's not here right now, okay?
Well, if I may just preserve the point, that in his, his opinion as an expert is not limited only to looking at this particular case. His concerns about instability are obviously drawn on his experience overall, that's why we bring experts here.
If somebody doesn't follow appropriate standards, is apparently what he's saying. Here, we're not, we're not there yet. We don't know who's gonna be doing it and we don't have a plan in front of us, so we're going to surmise that everything is going, going to be done within the right way to do it.
Mister Bagoff, with respect, I don't think you have the legal right to make that statement.
Well, the statement is, let's focus on this area and this application and what somebody else did. There are many people and there, I'll, I'll ask you as an expert, do other people do it correctly? Do other people do blasting correctly?
Yeah, if with very, if they're overseen, it's not an outside agency, but
And that's fine, so both sides were now heard, there are people who do blasting correctly, in his opinion, and people who do blasting incorrectly, in his opinion.
And he's, my concern actually goes back to what happened at the last meeting with Mister Seal. And that is the chair repeatedly gave assurances to the public that you can rest assured that the officials will be making sure the rules are adhered to and therefore there's no problem. And with respect, Mister Bagoff, you made repeated statements that there won't be a problem because we have rules. It's not for the chair to address an opinion of that nature. And you did it again just now, when you said, well, we don't have to worry about what happened there because we know the rules will be adhered to and if they're adhered to, there won't be a problem. It's not for you as a chair to say that, you're not an expert in the field.
I'm sorry, I would correct you, I didn't say anything about the rules, I said, there's two sides to that. One is he ta, he testified that in another site, something was gone awry. And I asked him as an expert, are there sites where everything is done perfectly? The answer is absolutely reasonable, I didn't say who did what, I said there's somebody that did something in his opinion that was not correct and they quote unquote overblasted. And there are sites where blasting is done correctly. That's all I wanted to bring out, so both site, both opinions are his as an expert, so it could be done well or maybe not. That's the future, right now, we're here right now when we're focusing on this site and information he's providing about this site and geotechnical report.
I think he was giving an example of where people appear to be following the rules, but problems emerge. And that was the point I understand his testimony was focusing on, that even where you have people following the rules, there are intangible factors, for example, unstable rock, that you're not seeing because you're misstating the report. And he's saying that even when you follow the rules, because of these intangible factors, you can have problems. And he's entitled to go into that subject and by analogy, I don't think as a chair you have the right to limit his testimony.
He used the term overblasting, is that following the rules, sir, as an expert?
Sorry?
You use the term overblasting in your description, is that following the rules?
Yes and no, um it's, it's not following the engineering design.
Stop right there, so
Finish though.
Well, the question was, the question was, is it following the design? And he just said it's not following the design, so in that case, which is not this case, things can go awry any place.
With respect, Mister Chair, you're, you're cross-examining yourself.
I'm asking him a question.
You asked him, did he, in his example, was it following the rules? He said yes and no, he said they were following the engineering design and then you interrupted him saying, okay, so they're following the design. You asked him if they're following the rules. There's a difference between following the state rules and following a design.
Go right ahead, complete your thoughts.
And so what I was trying to say, just to clarify, um and when, if something gets overblasted or or deeper than they expected, it's not, it's not a violation of the state regulation. It's a violation of the engineering design, because it, it, it basically threw all our parameters, design parameters out the window. And so that's why I'm saying there's a separation there and that's why from an engineering standpoint, all that should be approved uh with the right protocols in place and not left with the state regulations, which is, which are perfectly valid for making sure nobody gets hurt while they're blasting. But it's what happens to the rock when they blast is an engineering standard, not a public, not a, a state regulation. So that's, that's all I was trying to say.
That was the point I was trying to
Well, I'll, I'll ask, is there anything in your report that would lead you to believe that from what you've seen from the design, that there would be anything less than what is supposed to be done?
Well, I, I, yes, because I am concerned, the report basically used the most competent information that they found on the site and applied that all across the site and all slope stability, and so therefore um right now, they don't know what the actuals uh factors of safety are for the slopes.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Right.
So the public and the board hears that, that piece of information is valuable.
Mister Bagoff, you better speak up, I couldn't hear you at all standing here.
That piece of information is valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, go right ahead, Mister Goll.
And that, well, that's essentially the, the, my testimony, it was, uh there was a uh the, the geotechnical investigation was limited in scope and so was my review, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, that concludes Mister Goff's presentation. I have no questions at this point, but obviously the board may and the public may.
Thank you. So we're gonna start with uh Mayor McCarthy, do you have any? Okay, guys. Thank you. Mayor McCarthy, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mister Roy, you do raise a very important considerations, one, the impact of the wastewater utility line. Let's try, okay, I said thank you for your testimony, but he did raise important considerations. Uh one in particular was the impact of the wastewater utility line and would that create less stable uh causing destabilization, so that's a consideration. My question is, can the average on your chart provide stability? Is that, is this, are these typical conditions found when developing a site across a slope?
Well, every site is different, and so um so for example, if this building maybe were set back a hundred feet or two hundred feet away from the slope, it might be on more competent rock and not necessarily impacting the slope, for example, and sometimes I, I don't, and I'm not familiar with West Orange's ordinances, a lot of towns have like uh uh distance requirements from edges of slope so that they don't cause destabilize the slope.
Right, so our ordinance does have that, but that was adopted after this application.
All I'm saying is there's, there's an ordinance and then there's also a, you know, a physical
Right.
I, I think the witness was answering affirmatively but nodded, but didn't say yes to the mayor's question. Was your, the mayor asked you a question, were you answering yes or no? Because you just nodded and the record won't show your answer.
My quest, here's my question, my question was, on your chart here on page three, can the average of this strength? Uh what's the word?
Well, it'd actually be the chart, if you're looking at the chart of the quality, it would be on the prior page.
Well, hey, I'm talking about the strength though.
Yes.
The strength, if you take an average, does that provide stability when you're developing across a slope?
Well, again, you have to take into account all the factors, so that strength is accounted for, and like I said, um the engineer, the geotechnical engineer did the analysis, actually used what the strength they found in the field on those more competent materials. However, they didn't combine that with the condition of the rock and being a highly fractured condition. So if you go back to the, the, the chart, uh the table on the previous page, the rock qual, uh page two, um the lower rock quality designations would have a very large impact on the geo, the geological the geological uh structural index. Um and it would show much more fractured material, which would have a lower uh factor, which would then reduce um the stability of the slopes um and may or may not uh lower it to uh an unstable condition. Did I answer your question?
Uh, well, it just raises more questions, because then in number three, where it said it is the need to have an appropriate G S I factor that will truly dictate the overall stability of the slope.
Correct, that is correct, so that's, that is, that was one of the bigger issues we found in the analysis, is not using what was found in the field and applying the correct G S I factor.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Klein.
All this is, is just focusing on building D?
That's all I was asked to do.
Oh, so there, okay, so you don't know if there's issues with the other buildings?
I don't.
Okay. Um so, is there is there a way to build a foundation or, so the sta, the lack of stability has to do with the blasting and the excavation portion of it. So if they blast too much, So if they blast too much, you're gonna get a rock slide. If they didn't take into account the lack of stability, the rock may slide when they start to excavate. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, that is one of the concerns, but also even if you do everything neatly and you cut it out and, and, and it changes the configuration now, like I said, now that along that entire length of building, when they excavate down in a rock, that sort of like a triangular piece, if you, if you will, this being the slope. And I'm sorry to, it basically, my right hand showing a slope and my left hand being vertical, being the foundation of the building.
Right.
You're now isolated that bedrock. And so what does that do? In terms of its stability, can it stand on its own? Or could there be potentially like, for example, drainage issues or things like that that get into the rock now that could destabilize that weren't there before?
Is that when they were saying that the rocks are tilted uphill? Uh, so it was less likely to slide? Is that the part you, you talked about that?
They were saying that, but they also looked at the superficial exposed rock and, but if you look at the rock below grade that was degraded down slope, it would, they were an entirely different condition.
So even though the upper rocks on the slope are tilted up, the toe of slope is where you're afraid it's going to erode and then start to.
So just that, what we do, um, when we construct a slope.
Well, well, you're not constructing.
No, I'm just.
Oh, all right. Okay, okay.
This is part of the physics of it. So when you build a slope, you can't build it from the top down. Because if you start dumping material over, a slope means something as you build it up to support it. So if the material at the toe of the slope, that, that's the most critical part, the material at the toe of the slope or down half of the through the slope. If that material is much less competent, that's where it's going to be prone to failure. And if it can't, if it slides, it can't support the material above it. So I don't think the incline in that bedrock that they observed is necessarily indicative of a stable slope. Okay.
So during construction, are they gonna, well, I don't know if it, if they, if they took more samples? So, all right, let me ask you that question. So did they not take enough samples? Is that, did they take enough samples?
Oh, I, they didn't take a lot of samples across the, across the cross section. Some of them, they don't even go, they go like to, on the top above this top slope.
I wish I had a, I wish I had a visual. So like in your, on your slide, is it, you're talking about the, the S shape, right?
Well, that's the building.
Right. And the slope goes down to the.
Yeah, it's down.
So you don't have that, we don't have your slide?
No, well, it's, it's in the Langen report.
Well, this is from your slideshow. This is the.
No.
That's not you? Princeton Hydro? That's not yours?
Oh, that was a wetland impact.
Oh, oh, all right. Never mind. Oh, right. Never mind. All right. So, all right. So I guess.
So actually, if you look, and, and again, this is in the Langen report, and I know this is not, this is not good for the record, but when you look at the, the cross section that they analyzed.
Right.
Nothing was taken over here.
And that's the toe of the.
Nothing was taken over here. Well, this is the toe, this is where the utility line is, at the toe.
So, so, all right. So what are they missing if you go further east?
More borings?
But no, what, what? As you go further east of building D, it starts to slope down or up? I can't remember. Down.
Building D, it slopes down.
Right. So you're saying they didn't go far enough to get to the toe of the slope?
Well, actually, my, the majority of my report is basically, they didn't use the information they had to do the appropriate analysis.
I was gonna get to that next. All right. So, all right. So they, the borings are there, the data is there. You could have reanalyzed it or too much effort to reanalyze their data?
I'm not designing the site.
No, I understand, but, okay. So all you can say is with your experience, if they plugged in the correct RQDs and GSIs, what? It'll be worse than what they show. You don't know how much worse, but worse.
Right. Correct.
All right. All right.
The question is why, why, why did they do that? It's, it would have been simple enough.
Well, if that's simple, but you, you couldn't have done it?
I'm not the geotechnical engineer.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, sometimes if, if you're, well, I'm, I'm trying to prove something. I, I can say that's wrong. And I think it's gonna fail. If I can show that it failed, then there's no doubt that it failed. If, if you're, you're saying that this data, they're not using the right factors. They're using the, they're cherry picking the best factors on their slope. And then they do their analysis. Yeah, it's gonna be fine. It won't fail. But you're saying, no, that's not right. They should have used this factor and that factor and this factor, and then you'd see it would fail, but. So.
Let, they, let them reanalyze it and we'll take another look.
All right.
Sorry. Not my job.
You know, it's, it's clear to us that the burden, the, the burden of this evidence is the applicants. We're demonstrating that the applicant chose cherry picked certain statistical figures, ignored others. And therefore that shows, as the witness says, a significant flaw. It's the applicant's burden to show this can work safely. It's not our burden to do the figures and prove or disprove what they're supposed to show. We're showing that their analysis is not meeting, and as a witness says in his opinion, a proper engineering and analytical standard.
Okay.
It's not our job to prove what they're supposed to.
I understand, I understand. So then is it the, the method of removing the rock to make the foundation for the building and the garage? Is that? Is there? Is there an ability to still dig the foundation for the building and the garage? And not affect the slope? Is there a different method? It may be more expensive way of doing it or?
Well.
Or do you just?
It, it, it also, there's two factors. There's the construction method. I've seen it where we can, you can actually do what's called a rock trencher instead of doing blasting.
Okay.
Um, you can go in and trench a rocket, a little less vibration, still vibrations. Uh, but it's also the configuration of the rock itself. One thing I didn't see in here is any recommendations for, for example, a remediation plan. If all of a sudden these slopes start to destabilize, are they gonna go in and install, uh, you know, uh, um, anchors and on the, are they gonna run down there? And then is there a plan? Is there an approved area of disturbance that they can then go in? And now install these rock anchors and as, as they start seeing this, this, uh, slope start to fail? Or can they even do it in time before it fails?
Okay.
Because sometimes it's simply the condition of the material, that if they put this building there, it could just destabilize it.
So just the weight of the building?
No, just the fact that they're excavating, separating from the rest of the rock.
Okay.
Could be a destabilizing factor.
All right.
But I didn't see anything in the report to discuss that.
All right.
Move the building away a hundred feet and I, I think they would get a better result.
Okay. So there is a solution.
Well, they'd have to go into the wetlands.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
That's why they handed, they, they, they put it right next to the slope to fit their parking lot between there and the wetlands. They didn't want to get a, a permit for that.
Right. Oh, so if they wanted to try to get a permit, then they, they possibly could do it.
Sure. I guess, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Don't know why they didn't, but that's, that's not happening in the state.
All right. I'm good for now.
Vice Chairman Guarino.
That was my question. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Alper.
Sure. Thank you. Um, are you saying that it's unstable to build or that there's not enough information to tell if it's unstable to build?
I think it's not necessarily, uh, responsible to build that that close to the slope. This township is no stranger to landslides.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's occurred before. So, uh, to have that information, I would say, yeah, there's not enough, the, the, the information is not robust enough and the analysis was not done in a manner that would provide myself at least, with any confidence that nothing's gonna happen or there's gonna be no failure of the, of the slope.
Okay. What are the chances of a slope failure or a landslide if building D is built as proposed?
I'm not a statistician. I have no idea about that.
Is it, is it a non-zero chance?
Oh, it's definitely a non-zero chance. There's, I could say, a, as we say in the, uh, when we testify, it's, it's within a reasonable degree, a degree of engineering scientific certainty, which is really a 50/50. So. Fifty fifty.
It's a 50/50 chance if built as.
Reasonable. I say there's a reasonable. It's within a reasonable degree of engineering certainty. That's what could be stabilized.
Would you live there?
No.
I'm good.
Thank you. Counselperson Scarper, do you have any questions?
My questions have all been answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions, sir?
Just one quick question. Do you have a recommendation for the number of borings that you would, uh, recommend the applicant complete to ensure stability?
Well, there's a number of different things they could do. Um, obviously the more borings, the better usually, um, to try to get a more uh, understanding of the distribution of, of unstable rock material. There's also what's called seismic analysis, where you can actually, um, use, uh, it's basically geophysical means, but look at the surface of the rock and look at the competency. Uh, and through seismic analysis, you can actually also look at um, ripability of the rock, which means it shows the, the, the quality of that rock as well. There are a lot of different things that you could do to give you more information. Will it show that it's stable or the, or maybe it'll provide them with a better solution, but then maybe it'll say, hey, move the building. I don't know. That's not, yeah. But you're, yes, more info. With geotech work, one of the things to understand, geotechnical, we're dealing with borings. And so we're dealing with like one boring here, one boring 50 feet away or a hundred feet away, and we're interpolating in between. And so that's why there are factors of safety. But at the same time, if, if you have a boring up here on the top of the slope, there's, and then you have a boring at the, at the middle or bottom of the slope, very far away. And it, it, you can tell judgmentally from, as an engineering judgment, that there's a, a very big difference in the quality of rock between those two borings.
What's the number?
Number of borings?
Yeah, that's what he asked.
No, it would be, I mean, it's, it's an engineering judgment and that's, it's. Sure.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions from Mr. Goll's testimony?
Uh, to what extent would your? To what extent would your conclusions, uh, or your inferences change if you knew for a fact that, uh, blasting was not going to be used in escalating here?
I, I'm sorry, blasting was what?
It's not going to be used.
Again, we'd still have to understand the configuration of that rock and its overall, like, uh, the condition of this, this, the quality of that material, doing the slope stability material down. Just to keep in mind, none of their analysis addressed blasting or not blasting. None of it. It, it addressed static condition of the slope as it exists, one with the loading of the building on it. And one, if there was an earthquake. They didn't do anything about blast. There was no, there was no actual analysis.
Thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Goll on his testimony? Please come up, state your name, and you may ask a question. We have three minutes. Do any members of the public have any questions? Come up. You may ask Mr. Goll questions. You have three minutes. Go right ahead, sir.
Sure. Seth Rice Leder, uh, 17 Howe Drive. So I live on the, on one of those toe to the slopes, I guess, close enough, about 150 feet, as testified before. We have 15 Howe that's even closer directly in line with the slope. No, I'm not 15 Howe. Um, but right next door. When you, did you physically observe the properties by any chance? Did you walk through there?
No, I did not.
Okay. So were you able to look at a Google map looking down?
Yes.
Okay. So are those homes on the toe of the slope, are they built into the toe of the slope? Because I know my backyard has several, um.
Retaining walls.
Retaining walls. Correct. Thank you. So is that part of the toe, toe of the original slope that's already been built into?
Yes, they cut in order to make those, um, houses work. You can see how that, the slope goes down. It then gets cut off by a retaining wall and then you get a lower elevation, much lower elevation, which shows that a retaining wall was constructed there into the slope to build. For example, that's why I was asking 15 Howe. Uh, there's, there's an obvious, that's the one closest to that northeastern or that northwestern side of the site.
Right. I think, I think most of the homes there have an average of how many retaining walls would you say built in to the toe? Or you don't know? Okay. So it, if this was built as it's proposed today, not at, on the conceptual plan that was originally shown, and what? And if we had another 100 year rainstorm, similar to like what we did, had the other night, what would I expect as a person down slope? And what would my neighbor expect in the other three homes and the other five homes? What would happen?
Well.
Because this is very disconcerting, hearing two very different reports. So.
It's an excellent question. Um, water is the enemy of slope stability. Um, basically, um, as soon as you start, um, for example, suddenly, like, for example, the Atlantic Highlands, uh, which is not a bedrock, uh, geological formation, it's more of a cemented, uh, cemented sands, more recent. Um, sudden changes in, in, uh, groundwater elevation such as a rainstorm initiates what's called, uh, uh, landslides or they're called down. It's, it's a block failure of the, of the slump. It's a slumping of the slopes. Um, but similar things can happen if rainwater gets into, for example, between fractures and rock. Um, it not only acts as sort of a, a, a lubricant, it also can, um, add in, um, uh, water fracture, basically. Uh, that would actually, uh, lower the strength of the connection between rock.
So if this was built as proposed and approved as proposed, what could be done to protect the homes that are the closest to this construction?
I, I don't know because I don't have enough information.
Okay. Well, I, I guess the question is, there, there was identified and that there was basalt rock more towards the top that was strong. Could blasting create cracks within a strong basalt type rock and cause additional problems?
Let me back up. The whole point of blasting is to basically weaken the rock to, so you can excavate down.
Right.
You'd have to do a controlled blasting. I mean, there's always this, uh, uh, an element, uh, just beyond the area that they're blasting and intending that weakens the rock, but it, you know, if it's a solid rock formation and they're blasting it appropriately, um, you know, you can do it and not reduce the strength of that rock. In this situation, no. It's less, my concern is less on the top of the slope than it is the bottom of this, on the slope.
Okay. Thank you very much. More people. Thank you. Come right up and, uh, state your name for the record and you may ask a question, please.
Rachel Klein, Howell Drive. Um, when you looked at the numbers and threw your report together, were you aware that there had been a landslide on this mountaintop before, only about 200 feet away from where they're proposing to blast in 1998?
I heard some anecdotal, uh, uh, testimony about that, um, at the June 30th meeting. I think there was discussion about it.
Does that change anything or make you think that this is an event that might be likely to happen again or that we should be concerned about?
I'm gonna object. Does he talk about the event? Was there an event? I, I don't know. I'm hearing this for the first time. If he has the detail, he can testify, but if he doesn't know about it, I think it would be speculative.
Giving a hypothetical basis. No, it happened.
Well, the witness is saying, heard testimony without a prior.
He's taking it as a hypothetical, which is permitted for an expert to do. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm not saying it did happen. Representing it as a hypothetical and then.
Well, ju- just to be clear, I, I don't know the nature of that failure. I don't know the, the configuration. I don't know what exactly what caused it. Um, but if a, if a landslide had occurred, well, on that, in that vicinity, it can occur again. I don't, I just don't know the conditions of that specific incident.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions from Mr. Goll's testimony? Please come up and be identified. Say your name, sir.
Bob Sharonow, nine Cadmus Court, West Orange. S H A R E N O W. Based on your analysis of all the rock there and the blasting that would have to take place, will there be any kind of serious vibration that will go to those homes on Howe just a short distance away?
Well, that's what would be, a, a, and on that wall, it's gonna be a combination of the geotechnical design and also making sure that, um, there are, that's part of the state regulations where they're making sure that, you know, adjacent structures are not going to get damaged and things like that during the blasting. Um, could it happen? Absolutely. I mean, you set up seismic graphs and they, they, what they do is, um, in a lot of blasting locations or even deep excavations in an urban environment, for example, when buildings are very close, they'll install, they'll basically place these portable seismic graphs, um, that can detect vibrations. And if it goes up of a certain vibration amount, then they have to actually figure out something else to do or stop what they're doing until they can figure out, make sure the building isn't damaged.
And is it possible that what they would be doing after they start, you would have to stop it and there would be no solution? Is that a possibility too?
I, I can't answer that. I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a, it would be site specific, but I would imagine, um, you know, it, it, it is there to make sure that there, they might have to just change the method of the way they're excavating.
Okay. Do I understand from what you were saying that there's a possibility after this building is up, that there could be some sagging in one area of the building?
No, I never said that. I never said the building.
Is there a possibility based on all your information about the rock after the blasting, buildings up?
If the slope were to destabilize underneath the building, then yeah, there could be definitely.
It could happen. It could happen, right?
It's in the realm of, I guess, possibilities, but I just don't know. I don't have enough information.
It's happening to twenty buildings in Miami, Florida right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do any member of the public have any questions for Mr. Gall?
Debbie Vitenski, Rappleye Court, West Orange. So can you just clarify a little bit? You were saying that they have to to build the southern part. Of the of building D, they have to go down twenty-five feet to build the parking?
Yes, well, I looked at the the topo. It's a little bit hard to to distinguish. Bless you. It's a little bit hard to distinguish. Um, the uh, the the Langen report specifically states that they'll have to in a in a location, they're going to have to go at least twenty-five feet down.
And how many? So my question is, what is, and the northern part has the the salt. As you go to this toward the south, you said you've got more fractured or more fragile rock formation?
Well, as you went down slope, it became so along the whole slope, as you went down slope, the worst area was the was the nor uh the north uh wait a minute. I get the northeastern side of the the corner by fifteen Howell, I believe it is. Um, that's where you were getting RQDs of like zero in twenty-three.
And what about the part of the slope near the area where you're excavating for the parking? What was that like?
What was that like?
Yeah, in terms of stability, in terms of um, strength of the rock.
We look to see where they with the borings in comparison to the. Get out my phone again here, but um it looks like they. They printed this out this twenty-four by thirty-six on eight and a half by eleven. Let me just take a quick. I'm looking at this a bit closer. Well, the uh just seeing they did borings. They did test pits in that area. There were no borings. There's one boring right at the north, north, the northeastern corner, which was. Uh, N L B four. And when you look at the N L B four quality. Um, that boring log. It'll be four they well, they identified as they stopped drilling. Uh, down at twenty-two feet, so they didn't go, they didn't go too, they didn't go as deep as the building is going to be, but they went down twenty-two feet. And according to N L B four. They were getting, um, they got RQDs of fifty-two and ninety-three. Fifty-two would be just above what's considered fair. And it goes into that, it's like right over the border, uh, goes to fifty is um fifty is the cutoff to um uh, poor and fair. And so it ends up going right into the fair, the lower end. The rock, so it's not, it's not the most, you know, it's not the highest. As a matter of fact, the in that location. They did get eighty-three at a in a lower core. Um, so at uh at twelve to seventeen, they got a RQD of fifty-two. And then at a um, at at seventeen to twenty-two feet, they got eighty-three, so it started improving at that depth.
So I get my question is conceptually, could you be creating like a potential for a sinkhole where you've got the twenty? No.
No sinkholes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, does any other member of the public have any questions? Please come up and be identified.
My name is Jean Stoloff. One oh two Fairway, Brona. S T O L O F F. I didn't get a chance to read the Langen report. Um, could you ta- could could you explain what the impact of the high groundwater is? In the vicinity of building D related to the um the development of the the building and the blasting?
As it relates to slope stability. Uh, when you do look at the model, it appears that they did put a water table. Uh, there's a dashed line um in there. It basically sits top of the highly fractured um and decomposed bedrock. Um, and in some cases, it sits on top of the bedrock. Um, but that's that looks like it was accounted for in the analysis.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions? Please come up and be identified.
Mark Patel, Bakely, Best Orange. Um, be if the plan proceeds forward as it is laid out right now. Um, what kind of impact would it translate to Bakely Terrace, which is right close to the building that is under question? It's in in the grand section.
Which road?
Uh, Bakely, B A K L E Y. Terrace.
Uh, oh, it's cut off there. Is that, is it also uh near uh Rosemont?
Yeah, it's on the top. Area where the actual drainage.
I don't know. What do you mean by?
So i- if the plan goes as um, the building goes as planned, uh, current plans. And um, you mentioned earlier that uh there could be stability issues. If uh it is as we proceed forward, then uh those uh unstable uh grounds, can they penetrate or pass on to have knock-on effect on other streets and areas um around there?
No, I would, I would say that not initially a surp- you mean like a subsurface problem?
Subsurface problem that can pass on to other houses.
No, I I I think you're far enough away that it would not cause a subsurface problem. It would be a matter of slow fail. Material coming down the surface would be a problem.
Okay, and then the water impacts, uh, would that be heavy rains or anything else once in a hundred year storms? Would that also um increase any kind of impact or any kind of concerns?
I didn't look at the stormwater system for the building, so I don't know which way they're directing the water.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public come right up, sir?
Hi, Tony Bastola, V A S T O L A, Ten Lapis, in the Highlands. Uh, uh, when you were talking about the coring, you were indicating they went down, I think it was around twenty-five feet.
Or could I trouble you, sir? Could you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. When you were talking about the coring, you were indicating that when they pulled the cores out, I guess they were take checking the quality and some of it was pretty well broken up and not solid.
Correct.
Um, if they, that seems to me like that would be excavation level until they get down to something solid. How far could they possibly have to go down till they hit solid that they can, you know, put beams in to put a foundation for a building?
Well, I there wasn't an extensive set of borings done below the below the building. There were a few test pits. Um, the the poorer quality with more downhill from the building. Um, although um yeah, it's on the downhill slope of the side of that building, so it's it's not necessarily under the foundation.
Okay, were you surprised about the quality of the cores?
I mean. Not when you review in in accordance with the um the geologic mapping of the area, it makes sense in the topography. So obviously, whenever you have an area that has exposed uh outcrops and and rocks, it's it's a, and this is more in geologic time, there's an active. You know, when you have exposed rock, you know, they're actively moving over and it might not be over, you know, years, decades or a hundred years, you know, that, but that that just shows that it is, you know, it is an active movement. Um, um, over time, you know, more erosion than if you're on a level or area of land. Um, so that would be a um, you know, and then when you look at the contact between the Brinkus Formation and the Felthill Formation, anytime you get an area of contact between two two different formations, I even stated in in my letter is you do get more propensity for uh surface water to migrate down because of that contact. At the contact zone, the the rock is always a little less uh quality and then by adding all that water will actually increase the degradation and and wear of that rock.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions? Mr. Gall's testimony, please come up and be identified.
Uh, Rachel Klein, Hellwell Drive again. Um, so I know that, did you have a chance to study the the whole site or did you just really kind of look at building D?
My focus was building.
Building D. Um, so there's, as you go into the woods, there's another slope and building A is going, I believe building A is going to be on the side of another pretty dramatic slope. It's not nowhere near as dramatic as the slope we're talking about. But because it's one ridge line, one mountain top. Would it have behooved them to maybe have also done a couple boring studies on the other side of the slope? Where the other building is going to sit?
I I don't know if they did or they did not. So I I apologize. I don't, I don't have that to, I don't know if they they did.
Do you think that would have been?
Well, if if it's over a certain.
What would you have done?
Uh, or I'd be seeing a specific amount of borings below a building. And that's for foundation design, things like that. That might reveal something, but I don't know any of the specifics of those buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Look, have any questions? Mr. Gall's testimony, please come up and be identified.
Hey, Seth Weisler, seventeen Howell Drive. So within regards to building D, what are you recommending? For this slope to be safe and how should this be built?
Well, like I said, the the most simplest, um, the most straightforward is to move the building away from that slope. And and not impacted.
So and if you took away a garage underneath?
I mean, it would lessen the, it would lessen the um the excavation they needed to do.
So would would new permits have to be taken out and dealing with the um, what do you call that? The uh, the water, the environmental issues? Would new permits have to be taken out with DEP and things like that if you move the building?
If they move it?
Yeah.
Uh, well, yeah, I mean, that wasn't the focus of my review, but based on my experience in my firm, yeah, they if they encroach onto those transition areas and wetlands, they're going to need to modify their permit.
Thank you, the wetlands. That's what I was looking for. A lot of technical terms tonight. Thank you, sorry. Um, so did did you, in any of your reports, do you have a map of where that sewer line is? Because in most of the reports that we've seen testimony to did not show this specific area of Howell Drive in relation to building D, which is a concern. Do you, so are you, do you have a map that shows where that sewer line is?
Well, the map that was provided to us that Langen prepared, well, it was their their investigation plan. I'll be honest, I don't know who the engineer was that did the civil design for the site, but um, on their existing topo maps and the and the information and property boundaries and easements, it does identify the easement, so it is on the plans.
Okay.
So you could see that.
Which, okay, I guess I'll try to look for that. Um, and I guess the last issue is what if this does get built the way it is, you did mention your testimony draining issues. What could be done to resolve some of that initially? You said there could be drainage issues, so what could the developer do to prevent drainage issues if it is built like it's supposed to be as it's being submitted today?
I'm going to object. I believe that the witness testified that he did not analyze the stormwater runoff system for the site.
He said there could be drainage issues, so I'm wondering what remedy he might suggest to prevent drainage issues if this building, which is a hundred and fifty feet to two hundred from our homes on an unstable slope, what can be done by the developer? It's a fair question.
He didn't testify to stormwater management, nor is he an expert in.
I'm sorry?
He didn't testify to stormwater management, nor is he an expert in stormwater management as presented. So he really can't answer that question. Okay.
Stormwater management, I just wasn't sworn in tonight for that purpose.
Okay.
So I didn't, and I didn't study that as part of this project.
Fair enough. Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Gall's testimony? Please come up and be identified. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gall.
Thank you.
Mr. Afron? Mr. Afron?
Okay, I.
Mr. Afron?
Thank you. Uh.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I assume we're not up to a break yet, so we're ready to go forward. Okay. Uh, Ed Davis will uh come back and he will supplement his testimony from the last meeting. There's also a video that was not available at the time, which is now available and was in uh Mr. Fagan's um collective memory.
Okay, so you're going to have to authenticate the video exactly what it is and what you're offering it for?
Is it here? Whose video is it though?
It it it's a video not taken by me. There's.
No, no, no.
The video was not taken by Mr. Davis, but it was the scene he witnessed.
Okay. That's what we just needed to know proper what the video was about and this is, this is something that you're going to then testify about, whether the video is shown first or after.
It it's up to the board, but I I would suggest while the video is playing, I'll describe what's what you can or see it showing and Mr. Fagan can stop it. And I'll pause it occasionally to walk you through where the video was taken from and what it showed. If Mr. if Mr. Davis didn't take this video, how can you authenticate wha- what's in it? Okay, well, I I think we need to establish that for the record, Bruce.
Let me just find, Bruce was sworn in the last time, so you still want to acknowledge that?
Yes.
Okay, so now.
Ju- just just have him walk through it, e- establish the authentication. Let him show it, but I think the record should be clear.
Mr. Afron can do that.
Yeah, that fine. Let me just ask you, do you have a question? Sure, this is May days. Were you personally present and witnessing the scenes that the video depicts?
Yes, the the video depicts, the video was taken in December twenty twenty-three, which as I talked about at the the last planning board meeting on this application. Um, I was there myself in the aftermath of that storm. Uh, I believe it was the seventeenth or the eighteenth of December twenty twenty-three. Uh, the video is taken not during the storm, but after the storm. I was there during the storm. So and I was also there the next day, so I was there the same day, but I did not take this video. Uh, it was given to me by a resident.
If we need to authenticate the video, then the video is present.
Mm-hmm, yes, this is the video. Okay, let's go.
We're going to mark this the next exhibit, so that would be oh. Sixteen. O A T. Okay, and you'll, you have it now on the.
Why, Danny, you said this would be only.
Right.
All right, so can you just pause it for one second, please? So so this spot, the the photographer in this case, uh, you you go forward slightly. This is, again, just as a reminder, my testimony uh the last session. Uh, this is what I call the retention pond in that testimony. This spot is in West Orange. The back of the person taking the photo is um the cut, the Essex House Country Club and the property owned by the borough of Essex Fells on that site is to the back. They're looking up across a retention pond. Um, that retention pond is the very bottom. It's adjacent to Warner Road in West Orange. That water you see before is entirely in West Orange. The project site is on the other side of that pond, so you're basically looking to the north, roughly northeast toward the West Essex Highlands Condominium Association. Above that is the project site. So you can go ahead, please. Yes. All right, just stop there for a moment, please. So you you'll see in the next uh thirty seconds or so, the the videographer is walking from West Orange toward the edge of West Orange toward the West West Orange Essex Fells border. So he's walking basically toward Oval Road and you'll see like directly behind these trees, you'll increasingly see is the edges retention pond and then you see the canoe brook, which the headwaters are at this project site are coming from the right to the left. which the headwaters are at this project site are coming from the right to the left into, uh, the corner of Essex Fells. Please. Yeah. And so the, the house you see through the woods, that's Essex Fells where you're still, videographer is in West Orange. He's looking across the border. Uh, I believe that house is one sixty-three Oval Road, which is, uh, the first or second house in Essex Fells. Go ahead. So again, you could continue. This is again, the videographer is standing on Oval Road in West Orange at the moment, looking up. He's looking to the north. Um, to the left is Essex Fells, to the right is West Orange. Again, that's one sixty-three Oval Road in Essex Fells, that house toward the left. What, what you're seeing is typical of, of what I described my testimony in, in a medium to heavy rainfall. This is after the rain subsided. If you could back up just two seconds, do you see that wooden gate? Please, right there. That, that wooden gate I described my testimony, that's the border of West Orange and Essex Fells. That's Oval Road on both sides of it. So the water, what we talked, I was asked by the council, sorry, by the planning board members. Um, when I talked about concerns about, uh, potential impact on the road, the road washing out and potentially cutting off emergency access by police and fire. The, the emergency access is through that gate. That gate's controlled by Essex Fells. You see water on the left. We saw water on the right. That's the level of the water I referenced. I'm concerned about it. Current conditions under a rainstorm. That road is under stress and the infrastructure you're seeing, which we'll, we'll see in more detail going forward, uh, is under stress. So that's the impact I'm concerned about. To the left again, that's the entrance to the Essex House Country Club. That's coming from West Orange. All that water on your left, that, if you just stop it, back where we were. Yeah, that bridge is on the grounds of the Essex Fells Country Club. Just to situate again, the Borough of Essex Fells in our direct interest here. The borough and its water utilities since nineteen twenty has owned the land to the left. Basically, right from the foreground, uh, which you see as a golf course is actually, we consider it a well field. It's a roughly seventeen acre well field we've owned since nineteen twenty. We maintain it for water purposes. We lease the land to the country club. That little bridge you see in the foreground is for golf purposes. The country club built that. It's a, it's spanning the canoe brook. So the water now your back is to West Orange and the project site. You're looking across the country club in the far distance is basically Eagle Rock Avenue and toward Roseland. Go ahead, please. All right. So, so just if you go back to, pan to the left. Cause this is, when I talked a lot about the buildings we have, um, that the Borough of Essex Fells owns on this site, right, our well field. The building you see before you is owned by the Borough of Essex Fells. It's currently a storage building. But that is the site, um, half of that building doesn't exist anymore because that's where we're building, uh, a PFOs treatment facility that I mentioned. So that's the, you know, currently a three million dollar project could go up to five million dollars. But that's going to be the site of it. We're putting in the same place. It's going to look very similar to that. It'll be slightly elevated. But you can see the water is going up to that building, which is a concern of ours. Given the equipment and the water treatment facility that's going to be in that building roughly at the same elevation. So again, canoe brook is to your right. It goes basically behind that building. Um, so now you're seeing overflow in a, in a storm where the banks of the canoe brook have overflowed. We'll see the entire span of it. But I'm eventually going to reference the distance between that left edge of that building. And, and one of the questions I got is I described it as a hundred fifty yards roughly of overflow, right? The stream's normally ten feet. I said, how do you know it's a hundred fifty yards? Well, I know because basically I've measured the left edge of that building. Um, and where that water is to what I'll show on the right side as this camera pans out, which is the green on this country club. So if you stop right there, you're starting to see on the right, there's a small white building. That is a well. That's our well house. So basically the, the, uh, well house is basically water is up to the edge of it. We talked a little bit about my concern about water under current conditions, but certainly under future conditions overwhelming that well, getting into the well, contaminating the well. So that well is, we're not doing anything with that. That is remaining where it is. So that's one of our concerns. You can see it. It's, the inside is not underwater yet, but it's close. So if you could continue, please. All right. So if you stop right there for a second. There you go. Yeah. So stop right there. That, that's close enough. So in the, the hundred fifty yard estimate I gave you, which, which, what you're seeing, that's still sort of looking at, you know, some of our buildings, but if you go a little bit forward. Yeah. In the distance right there is fine. In the, in the distance toward the right of this picture, um, there, this is a golf hole, believe it or not. Can't quite tell right now it's underwater. But in the far right is a, is a green for the, for the first hole at Essex Fells. Basically, if, if you look at the span of this and, and similar pictures I've received, and then I regularly see myself when it rains. Uh, if you measure that left edge of that building, that's like called a storage building or future PFOs treatment facility to the right edge of that water, which is not completely covering the green, was up to the front of it. That's specifically if you, if you, uh, measure it, it's five hundred and sixteen feet. Uh, that's a hundred and seventy-two yards. To be fair, I kind of rounded down and said a hundred fifty, but that's a standard, you know, condition today when we have a moderate to heavy rain. So if you could continue. Again, that's the canoe brook right there that, you know, tend to turn like fifteen feet. You see a little bit of grass in there. That's the, the high, the top of the bank. To your left here, you're seeing, again, this is looking back toward the project site. Roseland's to my back. Um, you're seeing there's a path right here on the left, uh, where the water is. The channel normally is to the right, on the, just the right side of that intermediate grass. And this is relative to the, where we were before. You can, you can keep it running. But, uh, relative to where, where this is close to Oval Road than where we would see now. It's going back to the, where the building was. He's kind of going back and forth. This is the bridge you saw earlier, uh, toward the edge of, um, Oval Road. Again, this is, if you could stop it there. Although this is a country club, um, golf cart bridge, which is not what I was, you know, focused on or concerned about in my testimony. Beyond that, you go ahead, please. Let it run. Beyond that is basically, again, that's one sixty-three, that house right there in the distance, that's one sixty-three Oval Essex Fells. This water that's coming in right there is coming from West Orange. Um, and you could see it's basically at the top of the bank and it's also at the top of the culvert as I described it in my testimony, um, today, under existing conditions. So one of our concerns is if there's any appreciable impact from this development. You're basically washing out your over the road. Um, and that's going to have a drastic impact on, um, both West Orange's infrastructure there and Essex Fells infrastructure. The other thing, just again, by reference to my testimony, uh, I talked about a sewer uplift station, right? That's not shown on this video, but based on where we just were three seconds ago in this video. When you're looking at, uh, that culvert, yeah, from here, that sewer uplift station is just to the left of this, uh, video. So what happens is this wall of water from West Orange also blocks a culvert coming from Essex Fells where the sewer uplift station is. So basically that water backs up, even though the sewer uplift station probably, you know, I'd estimate forty feet to the left. Um, that's the one where we're, uh, I talked about the two hundred thousand dollars in repairs we're doing this year to that. Um, that's a significant sewer infrastructure station for the Borough of Essex Fells. Um, we can't let that sort of go under or be impacted by future stormwater impact. If it's damaged by additional flooding, we have a major problem. Please continue. Again, this is just looking the other way back, my backs to West Orange here and Oval Road. I'm looking toward Roseland, but if you can see it, basically this is not the entire length of the golf course, the entire width of the golf course. But you can see sort of the flow of water. This is sort of the day after a storm. Um, obviously you see some of the ponding and pooling we saw, um, and that's my concern. And, yeah, this is all to the, relative to the project site or the proposed project site. This is basically to the southeast. This is, and, and topographically this is downhill and it's downstream from the canoe brook. Um, basically this is the corner of, uh, Essex Fells and West Orange. Um, and then as you're looking here, you're looking toward, uh, you know, where canoe brook flows, which is eventually to Eagle Rock Avenue in Roseland and on to, uh, Holm Hill and other sections of Roseland and beyond. I think, uh, I, I think that's the end of the video. And then so I'll just pause there for the board to, uh, if they have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is that the end of your testimony, Mayor?
It is.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? Mr. Klein, do you have any questions? Vice Chairman Durino, do you have any questions? Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions? Councilperson Scarpet, do you have any questions?
Uh, I just want to thank the mayor. Um, I had offered to go out and see this myself as it was a real concern of mine during the next storm, but his presentation here was very thorough and enlightening. And, um, as I suspected, um, does look like it will really impact the infrastructure of West Orange and Essex Fells. So I want to thank him.
Thank you, Councilperson. Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. James.
Hazel, do you have any questions?
I just have a couple.
Mr. Plucker, go right ahead.
Just a couple, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm with the record. I believe you did testify last time. You were not a professional engineer. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you are then unable to analyze the stormwater proposal that's been proposed as part of this application? And how that may affect runoff from the subject property? Is that correct?
From an expert perspective, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plucker. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis on his testimony? Please come up, be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions, Mr. Mayor Davis on his testimony? Please come up and be identified. Go right ahead.
Maria DePalma.
You have to swear. It's okay.
Do it. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to know how long did that water take to recede?
I don't, I don't have a specific answer. Typically, um, I mean, there's a representative example of what I see. Uh, it, it typically takes, uh, at least hours. It takes half a day, I would say at a minimum. Um, and what you're seeing, a lot of the water here is already receded in this picture. Um, you can already see it's kind of starting to go back into the banks. Uh, this was taken the next morning after the storm. So I'd estimate it's probably twelve hours after the majority of the storm passed.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis on his testimony?
Yeah, the, the video I believe is taken December eighteenth. So, uh, by that, you know, it was, it was the night before. So whether that's December seventeenth into the early morning of December eighteenth. But that's, that's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three.
One more time.
No, no, it's seventeenth and eighteenth of December, twenty twenty-three. Correct, correct.
Thank you. Okay. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis on his testimony? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mayor. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Come up, sir.
Donaldershow, Holm Hill Lane, Roseland, and I'm also the president of the Holm Hill Association, which is sixty-five homes on the other side of Eagle Rock Avenue and of which about a dozen are directly affected by, um, stormwater because they are on the eastern side of our development where the canoe brook runs specifically alongside on their homes. And I appreciate Mayor, um, you having shown this. And, uh, I know I'm not allowed to testify, so I just want to, um, just mention that with just even the recent storms.
Sir, you can ask Mayor Davis a testimony?
I know that I.
Okay, good.
Testify, but.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for you relative to the water that, um, you were showing with the pumping station because we get out of drinking water from Essex Fells, right? And you were talking about the pumping station. Where's that, right? How does it affect the drinking water? It was the flood.
Yeah. So, so how, how does it affect the drinking water? Uh, two potential ways. Um, right now the well is off, but obviously we're hoping to restart the well, uh, once the treatment facility is in place. Uh, yes, historic, we provide a hundred percent of, of Roseland's water, uh, through multiple wells, including this one. Um, basically, if, if the flooding gets too great, the concern, one of the concerns I have is the well, uh, might have to be shut down. Uh, because once it gets flooded, you can't, you can't pump sort of groundwater out into the, uh, drinking water community. Uh, the second concern is just contamination. Um, when you have flooding of this nature, uh, the water's dirtier coming downhill. Uh, we're worried about contaminating, uh, the water source longer term. Uh, whether that's through lack of recharge, things of that nature. So there's both infrastructure damage. Um, there's, uh, potential, um, inability to supply the water we're contractually obligated to supply to, or twenty-two thousand customers in four towns in West Essex. Um, in addition, obviously any amount we're spending, uh, to repair damage, uh, is brought ultimately by water customers. So that's not just an Essex Fells problem. That's basically every, uh, resident of North Caldwell, Caldwell, Roseland and Essex Fells is bearing that burden. So that's the concern.
Okay. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis? Come right up, sir.
Um, based on your experience, right? This storm category wasn't closer to the median? Have you seen worse than this? Less than this? Or this was one of the smaller storms?
I would describe this as one of the largest storms. It's sort of, I've certainly seen this multiple times, you know, this amount. I've not seen, for instance, that green that was in the distance further out, which I described as, you know, a hundred and seventy-two yards roughly. I have not seen that ground, that green underwater, uh, mainly because the, uh, it's, it's a little bit higher than some of the other things the water was spread out before that happens. Um, and as I testified, um, in, in the last meeting, basically it's not as common. You see the water going over, uh, Oval Road. You see a little bit in the video at the beginning, um, where you see a little bit of ponding on the left and the right shoulder of Oval Road. Um, I, I have seen that at least five times, but I have not seen it. And, and this is sort of what you're seeing on this video. So it's at the high end. I've not seen it regularly above that.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis? Please come up and be identified.
Yes. Hello. My name is Leah Massey. I'm from Montclair, New Jersey. My, my question to Mayor Davis is, is that area where the water is going on the golf course, is that identified as FEMA floodplains?
I, I can't testify to the entire length of it, but, but yes, the, the canoe brook is mapped. Uh, there's both, uh, mapped wetlands I can testify to because, um, on, in the middle of that where you saw our, um, project site and our existing buildings, uh, there's a lot of, we had to, as part of our project, map that area. Um, and so yes, I'm not a stormwater expert. I can't testify to sort of which FEMA map, but, but that is no question. Um, both protected wetlands halfway through, um, and it is, um, I believe mapped on FEMA maps as a floodplain.
Thank you. Do any member of the public have any questions for Mayor Davis on his testimony? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mayor Davis.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Afron? Okay. We're going to take a five minute break now till Mr. Afron comes back.
It's 900 feet away from where this is.
On the record.
For that.
Mr. Efron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we only have two other witnesses this evening. Anne Marchionne is here. Unexpectedly, she was here today. I thought she was coming on the 30th, which is very convenient. So I will call Ms. Marchionne from the Essex County Environmental Commission. She intends to read a statement from the commission of which she is a member.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, you okay?
Yes. She's got to go there.
Thank you so much. I'm a member of the Essex County.
Excuse me.
Ma'am.
You have to.
Sorry.
Ma'am, raise your hand. We're going to swear you with it. Thank you.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please put your name on the record and spell, spell it, please.
Sure. Anne Marchioni, M-A-R-C-H-I-O-N-I.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I am a member of the Essex County Environmental Commission, and we pass this resolution concerning this property.
No, you need the microphone, but I mean, it's not picking up. It's not making a bond.
Thank you. Is that better? Hello?
Hello, hello. You just speak, you have to speak louder.
Okay. Resolution of the Essex County Environmental Commission, requesting that the township of West Orange support the preservation of the forest on the Second Watchung Mountain Ridge. Whereas these 120 acres of intact forest are a significant element of the West Essex area. And whereas the forest provides biodiversity, groundwater recharge, clean air and carbon storage. And whereas this area provides natural habitats for pollinators, birds, and other wildlife areas, or other wildlife. And whereas this area serves clean water to towns and Essex County communities and reduces flooding and erosion. And whereas the area serves as a major cooling, oh, we could use that now, that doesn't go in, every zone to offset the urban heat island effect. And whereas this area increases open space in an area with little open space. And now therefore be it resolved that the Essex County Environmental Commission respectfully requests that the township of West Orange reject the proposed housing development and instead permanently preserve the forest on the Second Watchung Mountain Ridge Forest. Thank you. Oh, I did not state the date. Monday. I'd have to look at a calendar. It's the first Monday of June. First Monday of June.
The witness said the first Monday of June.
Second. Thank you.
Should we mark that document as an objector exhibit or is a statement sufficient?
You could, you'll mark it back.
It's not really.
It's not really an objector document.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I don't think we, she read it fully into the records. I don't know. I don't think we need a copy of it.
That's fine.
As an, as an exhibit.
It's not, it's not an exhibit because it's a personal, a statement from the commission.
Right.
Okay, good. Show noted. Thank you.
I just want to briefly call John Haydu as a witness just for further authentication of the video that Mayor Davis testified to.
Hey, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, could you please state your name on the record and spell your last name?
John Haydu, H-A-Y-D-U.
They'll say December 28th.
It says December 28th.
It might be the day.
It's the 18th.
Not of this day, this storm.
Okay, well, he's going to say it.
Mr. Haydu, your name appears in the lower left-hand corner where it says Haydu Flooding. What is your connection to this video, please?
I took the video on December 18th, 2023 at 7:50 a.m.
The witness is pointing, and I don't know how we get into the record, the cell phone version of the video, which contains the following information. Essex Fells Country Club, December 18, 2023, 7:50 a.m. What does that reference on your cell phone mean?
That's on my iPhone. That tells me when I took the video.
It might have been the date that they prepared the exhibit.
There's a date apparently on the screen of December 28th. Are you aware of what that date is and what it means on the screen? I can't see it from here, but members of the board have said they see December 28th.
The title of the, of the video. It should be, but the time is there. Okay, we're going to, we're going to take his testimony because he took it. So whatever he says, you got a difference of five days. If, well, 10 days, it may be a typo. Sir, you took the video. You should know.
I didn't do the wording. I took the video.
Okay, so that's why I said you'll testify to when the video was taken based on your records.
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
Do you heard Mayor Davis's testimony?
Yes.
And did you hear his description of the different scenes in the video as the video was played?
Yes.
Do you have any disagreement or dispute as to how we characterize the locations in the various points of the video?
No.
Thank you. That concludes my examination.
Just say the date. I asked you to say the date, please.
Would you recite again the date you took this video?
December 18th, 2023 at 7:50 a.m.
Would you be willing to provide a screen capture of your iPhone screen that contains that information?
We don't, we tried to.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I have one question. Was that video edited or stopped and/or add things added to it at all? Or was that a one continuous video that you took?
I have nine, nine videos from that day. I think in other videos also.
Okay, that's the, the video we saw, was that one continuous video? Or was that a compilation of cut and paste from other videos? Okay, that's the, the video we saw, was that one continuous video or was that a compilation of cut and paste from other videos?
We did. We, we took my, we took my videos and put them on this so that that was put together.
So that's.
All separate videos.
Separate videos consolidated into one video.
So I think the twenty-eighth is supposed to be eighteen.
Yeah, okay, we're, we're past that. I just wanted to know whether this was, you stood there with your phone.
No, I took like four or five different videos.
And then put it.
And their video too. I, I guess you can't listen to the video, but you can hear how wet it is, and I'm actually walking through about a foot of water too.
Okay, but all of the videos that were spliced together were all from the same day?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, good. Done.
That concludes my direct examination of Mr. Haydu unless there are questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you.
If the board would like, the individual who actually did the compilation and put the subtitle in is here, who could explain the date references?
I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
I think we're good.
We have one.
Remember the board had, nope, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one final witness, uh, that is Maria De Palma. She testified at the last hearing, but she didn't have the video footage of the, of fire scene in general. So she does have a video now that she wishes to speak to.
Yeah, I'm gonna say for the future, any videos or any documents must be presented before the meeting. You can't do this at the night. It's not gonna work anymore. Okay?
Understood.
Too many, too much difficulty making sure everything's working perfectly, plus the Zoom, plus this and plus that, so all in, must be presented beforehand so we can get everything up for the public and for the people.
I appreciate that. We will, we will work to that.
Thank you.
We'll use a rule of reasonableness in terms of how far in advance. I assume that will work.
At least, well, it should be ten days, but at least bef, the day or two before the meeting.
Well, we will work to that.
Because this is stretching our staff to get everything perfect.
No, we don't want that to happen, and we appreciate the staff's effort.
Later in the evening.
We, the staff has really been great, and we appreciate that very much. We have one final witness, Maria De Palma.
Okay, come on. Thank you.
She was sworn in, listen.
I swear.
Okay, could you please raise your right hand? Swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, could you just put your name on the record and spell your last name?
Maria, M-A-R-E-A, De Palma, D-E capital P-A-L-M-A.
Go right ahead, ma'am.
Ms. De Palma, there is a video, um, starting on the screen. Are you familiar with this video? And what scene does this video depict?